Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Westminster Select Board Meeting.
I'll call the meeting in Westminster Select Board Order Wednesday at November 11 at 6:30. Any adjustments to the agenda? Seeing none, acceptance of minutes September 27, 2023.
I'll move to accept the minutes, Ezra.
I'll accept, I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the minutes of September 27, 2023. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have another number to sign?
Uh... We could just sign all these things. Communications and public comments.
Hi Lisa Martin, I'm from the Board of the Winnebago Plankford Association. I'm head of the Conservancy and/Aququisitions Committee. And I wanted to bring to your attention that the association is in the process of applying for grants to acquire and conserve 96 acres on Old Athens Road. There is 12 acres south of the road and 84 acres north of the road. It runs right along the town line.
Is that John Shaddis's?
Indeed.
You actually don't want it so?
It's been a state for a while.
You know how long? It has taken 21 years. It has taken us 21 years. We've had four appraisals on that piece of land over the years. It went from, you don't want to know.
We're heading to the prices.
Did you keep doing it?
He kept 12 acres.
So he's got all the...
We're helping him to clean up the dumpster. We helped him a couple of days already. He's had a 30-year dumpster there. He's been working with them a couple of days with a backhoe and several people. That was it. We had trouble with the rain, as we can imagine. But we'll get out of the rain. So it abuts land that is already conserved to the west, which is already Winnebago Plankford Association. It will widen the corridor in one of the narrowest places on the trail system that runs, you know, now all the way from Grafton, if you can include the Putney Mountain Association, it goes all the way to Dumerson. It's pretty incredible. It's like 27 miles of trail. So we're in the process of applying for Vermont Housing and Conservation Board funding. And you have done this before in the past. I read it in the town plan today. It would be wonderful to be able to get a letter of support that we can present with our application to the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board. I already sent Katrina. You already have a letter?
Got it.
Oh, that's terrific. That is terrific. So may I ask two questions? On the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board application, they want to know, let's see, I have it here. How does the project conform to the town plan, our project? And from my point of view in reading the town plan, it's about reliable public access to lands. It's to recreation. And there actually will be no expansion of the trails for this land, but it is in an area where there are, it'll be sort of a jumping off point for the trails that go north and trails that go south to the center. And at some point in the 12-acre piece, we have a plan. We hope to be able to build a rustic structure like we have up on the pinnacle where school groups can go and use that as a starting point and for, you know, studying the wetlands that are there or going to the wetlands that are on the border between Neil Thompson's land in the northeast corner of the 84-acre piece. So we're hoping it will be something that the Westminster Center School, Studio Y in Westminster, and you know, other school groups, Grafton, we'll eventually be able to have this as a sort of jumping off point. So that's very... So am I right in saying recreation and public access? Is there anything else? I mean, that's the town plan from 2015. And I know you're, a new one is...
We'll be re-adapting the old one.
You will?
For now.
Okay.
About, yeah, two... I thought that you could just go with that town plan for now.
Okay, so that's appropriate recreation and public access?
Yep.
And maybe something about headwaters? I mean, it's high land. Mostly, a lot of that, I think watershed flows to the east Putney Brook, but it's also obviously some of it's coming this way from the northern line. So would it be appropriate to say something about, you know, clean water, right? If it's coming out of a good land, clean land?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, just looking at what it is, that's in the recreational conservation district.
Yeah, it's in the Resource Conservation District. And it's also in the Rich Line Protection Overlay District.
It's not like the place anyone's going to put a house.
Well, they...
He's going to put a dumpster?
No, no, we're going to get rid of the dump. We will, eventually we'll get rid of the dump. John Shaddis is interested in getting rid of the dump.
Is it all up there?
I know, but he's got, he's had many, 30-year dumpsters up there already that need to build it up. So it's better than it was, and it's going to get better still. So thank you for allowing me to be at the meeting today. Do you have any questions?
I don't.
How long's it take to get this done?
We won't have a closing until December 24, probably, because we have to raise, we'll get money, we'll get a good hunk, we hope, from Vermont Housing and Conservation Board. This is our 13th project with them. And the Vermont Land Trust will hold the easement on the land, because most of the other land is, the easements are held with Vermont Land Trust, but also with Vermont Fish and Wildlife on one. So it just, it's a lot of bureaucratic kind of...
So if this goes in, is hunting allowed on?
Oh, yeah, all pinnacle lands, except for the Martin Sanctuary, which is on Bemis Hill Road. And that came to us with those precondition. It's just, it's not a very large piece, but...
It's going to be a little bit smaller. I think this is one that should be protected.
Well, people do hunt there, I think. And we have, the most recent conservation that we've done is in the town of Athens, Go'wai, and Townton, 615 acres on the next ridge over. It's actually the land that we looked at from the pinnacle. It's in the pinnacle, it's really beautiful. If anyone, anybody ever wants to go up there, I'm happy to take you. There's a 15-acre pond up there, of which only half is protected. Any other questions? I don't think so. Thank you so much.
No, I don't have a question. But Venus is under communication and public comment. We can't make, it's not an act item.
Right.
Do we even need a motion?
Right.
Is that a motion to support?
It's not an action. No, but we could, we did make the agenda, but we could take, we could just add to the agenda for the next meeting.
And just make a motion to officially...
Make a motion to sign it. If that's...
To sign a letter, you mean?
Yes. Okay. Wait, we're going to need the letter. It's due before your next meeting. The next meeting is November...
No. Our next meeting...
Oh, no, you have...
Two weeks, two weeks.
We have, it's the 25th.
That'll be okay if I can get it that night.
Yep.
Yeah, she'll be able to do it.
Okay, okay. No, that's okay. It's due, it's due the next week.
We'll sign it the very same day.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much, Dee.
Thank you.
Do you need anything else from me? If you have any questions, you know where to find me. 740 Denny Street Road.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye. Thank you all.
All right. Any other communications and public comment? Moving on to new business, Pine Banks Road damage. I might as well speak on that.
All right. So as you guys probably know by now, the dam, it's really on Orchard Hill, Beaver Pond, let go, and came down Full Brook. And that big deep culvert where Full Brook goes under Pine Banks Road, right guy, firmly, you know where that is, just before Camp Road. It washed around the culvert, caused the bottom of the culvert to, it pulled because it took all the dirt around it, caused it to drop, and when it did it, blew the bottom of that culvert right up out, which the culvert wasn't great anyway. So now, of course, we sent the letter, you guys signed it, and the state, we're waiting to hear back from them on funding. Mark Pickering seems public. He said that, we were waiting also for hydraulic study, but he was leaning towards a bridge to go back there. He felt like it would be less expensive.
Can you break the bridge in the end and you know it gets closed before?
Oh, absolutely. I don't care what you do there. Whatever you do there, the road's going to be closed. It's the culvert, you know, close to 40 feet down to the bottom.
It stopped yesterday, right? It's pretty deep. It's deeper, it's pretty deep when you stand at the bottom.
So at the bottom, well, you were there. So at the bottom, Mark wants us to take and put four-foot minus, like, too high, bowl is high, like, 20 feet on each side of the wall. And then go two-foot minus above that, four-foot deep, up.
But right now?
Yeah, as a temporary fix for now, so that if we get a major rain that comes down and impedes on that, it won't wash the road out. It will, we're coming through that screwed up culvert. We took the little bit of ledge we had and stuff. We did a temporary fix, as you saw, enough to open the road back up and make it safe, but it's certainly not great. We don't have anything big enough to mess around with four-foot minus rock. Harris made it with two four-foot rocks on top of each other. So we're going to decide how we're going to handle it, whether we try to put out the bid, whether we try to get, you know, rent a machine, whether we try to get contractors...
This is on us?
Yes. It's on us, yep. We have, of course, we have money in our emergency fund for such events.
So what you're saying, Matt, are putting out the bid?
Yeah. My gut is if we put it out the bid, there...
We're not going to do that.
Probably not.
So can you write a piece of a coordinate to do it? You guys take the ball around?
We're capable, but we're also, we're trying to get all the roads graded and get things done before winter.
The other issue is four-foot rock. It's finding anybody that will haul four-foot rock.
Right.
Darren and I, Darren and Irene, four-foot rock was... I'll haul like two-foot, but four-foot's a big, that's a big rock, like...
Well, that's right. You want to, you want to drop four-foot rock in the back of your truck.
You'd destroy your job.
I would, so even if we could do it, I would call over there and see if I can get rock that ready. I wouldn't, we wouldn't drive-haul. That was my, my thing, but same with the two-foot. Well, and during Road Formans Report, I was going to tell you that truck number three is down. It's been down now for a couple of weeks, waiting for radiator. It's under warranty, but there's, there wasn't one in the country. There is now, and we're supposed to see it by the 25th. So that's a thing, and I'll hope. We're going to start putting plow frames on next week and getting ready. One of these big days is going to get cold, and we're going to have a little rainstorm, we're going to have ice. We have to be ready for it, so. In the past, what they might have done was called around a few contractors to see if anybody was even willing to do it. Because lately here, everybody's trying to, same vote, everybody's got work and they're trying to get it done before, before winter, you know, contractors are...
So maybe it's just that we have to do this?
Well, we have a hazard mitigation plan today.
I think that's his recommendation based on what he saw there.
That was...
And to help prevent, because this isn't going to happen overnight.
Not...
You know, it's going to last the winter. This is going to be next year before it even happens in this bowl.
Right.
This was, this was the state engineer telling Ben, myself, and Ally that this is what we need to do.
That called me.
We don't need to next, we could just tell them, no, we don't do it. I mean, I'm just, I'm just...
I'm sure you can, but here's the deal.
Oh, if we don't do it, it's a mess.
If we get a major storm and blows the road out, potentially, but not potentially, if, that's why I said if. I don't know where that would go. After they told you to do it, you decided not to, which I don't, I'm not...
No, it's always just the, do we have to do it? I mean, that was like, are they making us do it?
This is my theory, my thought. If Mark...
Are you stupid not to do it?
If Mark is going to bat for us to a degree for funding, he suggests that, I think we should follow his suggestion and...
I agree.
Make a reasonable attempt to secure what's there and, which would also, let's say we decide, no, we're not going to, blows the road out, everybody on that road now got to go to Putney, and now they're coming back for you guys, you know what I mean?
After all the tolls.
Yeah, would avoid...
To do this by an engineer. I'm not an engineer.
It would avoid all that.
No, I agree.
Yeah, so...
And we've got the money to do it. Like, I mean, it's not like, and I, and I believe that no matter what we do for a fix, the material we put there now will be able to be reused in the future.
Yeah.
So it's not going to be a mess.
So, so this is something we need to do.
Soon, now.
So what are our options for doing? What's your best, what's your best guess?
My gut is we're going to have to do some scrambling, call, call around, you know? Those, Jason Terry have time to do it. Those Amazer brothers have time to do it. Just Frank Carlo has time to do it. Somebody with a big machine can say...
All those people named don't have a machine.
Really? Paul Fergie have time to do it. James Savage have time to do it. You know, you start calling everybody I know in the area that I can think of.
I think we could...
I think that...
bypass the bid process for this, being it is an emergency.
Right.
And make an attempt to find somebody that can do it in a reasonable timeframe. Is your judgment that if you think this is, if you think someone's taking advantage of it, as far as like, you know, it's short notice, I can...
Well, I'll let you guys know for the final decision anyway. I'll just get an idea on what needs to be done, and I'll come back to you guys for an answer, even if you guys got to have a special or go home to each other or do whatever.
Is that a motion? No, I didn't make a motion. I'm just making a suggestion. So when we come back with somebody can do it, we then make a motion... To accept it. To accept it and bypass the big policy. Correct. Okay, so. As long as we're all in agreeance, if we can, it's an emergency, we can...
You put eyes on it, and you're in the business.
No, that culvert is pretty impressive how bad it is. It looks like, it looks like the rib cage of something up in the center. You know, a rock all around the body just blew up, and it's like...
And what's impressive is the water, the water line was about five feet below the road surface. So picture how deep that water was up against that road. It's amazing we didn't lose that road and have that go down and make a mess on the interstate or Route 5.
To call that a culvert right now is kind of a stretch. It's how much water runs through there, like today?
It's normally like...
Small brook?
What's that?
Is it small brook or a dry, dry?
It's a pretty good-sized brook. I'd say it's probably equivalent to the brook that runs along the side of West Road on a normal day.
You missed, Mark Pickering recommended probably a good bridge.
Yeah, I saw the...
Okay.
...about that, yeah.
But that Beaver Pond was Ben walk, I've got a mile walk. Last time I was up there, it was on a voice, and I would say it was probably at least eight acres that. It was a big pond, and it drained it all.
Where's that in relationship to like...
So if you go to John Quawkey's, it's the end of Orchard Hill, and you walk...
Oh, it's out.
You keep going straight down that road, the, it's, the end of the Beaver Pond actually was in the road. There was, back in the day, there was point and a half of water across the road, and then it continued to the east. Quite a ways. Like I said, it was like eight acres. It was big. And it all, it all drained, and it was still an active Beaver Pond. It was still...
That Beaver Pond's not on the town forest land at all, is it?
What's that?
It's not, not adjacent to the camp.
No, it's all, yeah, no, no, it's all private. It's not.
Further north.
It's nowhere near, yeah, nowhere near the town forest. Yeah. I say it's nowhere near the town forest, but as a crow flies, it's probably two miles from the town forest.
So we don't, we're not going to make a motion on anything tonight to take action on it, other than we all agree that it would be covered as an emergency?
Yep.
And you'll come back to us?
So I will move forward, trying to get some idea. You've looked at it, you're in the business, you want to have some idea on what that should cost to do that, so that when somebody comes back to me, you should be able to help know whether or not they're trying to take advantage, as you stated earlier.
Well, you just know how, I just know how it goes sometimes when you get late in the year and somebody wants something tomorrow, and you're going to be able to fit it in, it costs a little more.
But at the, but at the end of the day, right, we're going to have to decide whether or not, you know what? What it is, you're going to have to suck it up and get it done early.
So I would say the only thing here is that, say someone comes up, find someone next to here, to say, you know, I got an opening next week, then we'll have to have a special meeting again.
Right, yeah, and I'll get all you guys.
We'll get it right now.
I have a promise.
This is important.
If we close that road for a period of time, just thinking outside the box, obviously not a desirable thing to do, but then, then the access would be out through Putney.
Yes.
Wouldn't be the end of the world, but it would be some pretty ugly residents, I think.
Eventually, that's going to have to happen.
For the repair.
For the repair.
Yeah, but as, but if we were to not repair it...
And going, going into winter, I would, I would not want to have to drive all the way down to Putney to back them. Yeah, that wouldn't be good. We'd have, yeah, we'd have to come all the way into, from self-pound banks, all the way through their stretch of road, then derrers, then plow, all the ones around it. So, yeah, that would be a challenge at best.
It doesn't seem like a big chunk of change to get it repaired.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure.
So you have some money in the emergency fund?
We do. I think she said 150.
All right, emergency fund you do, and then I, there might even be a little extra steam on mine.
Oh, this isn't good.
Is it not?
This is...
Yeah. But anyway.
15, 20 grand.
I was going to say 20, 25, but yeah.
Where do you get for it?
Well, that's, you got to call ahead and call them, they haven't sorted it out.
Yeah, when they, when they blast or crush, whatever they end up with, they, so that's another thing. So if we're going to go through with this, then I've got to call them and say, hey, start sorting out four-foot rock, because somebody's coming to get it. And it doesn't matter who it is, that's where they're going.
So worst-case scenario, nobody, you can't find anybody to do it, we have to rent something?
We're going to have to figure it out, yep. I'm up for choice. Like I said, if it did, if something happened, if we didn't do it, I could call Mark and ask him, hey, Mark, we don't do what you asked us to do, what's going to happen?
Yeah, we're going to...
It's going to be a hard conversation.
Right, well, and usually if you don't do what's recommended, then it affects your funding and aid for the future. You essentially don't get any from anybody.
But at the end of the day, he's really going to bat for us.
Yeah.
That culvert has been bad, it didn't happen overnight?
No. We knew, of course, yeah, Mark, Mark, I was told that the state came, they did a hydraulic study years ago, they stopped, they said this needs a bridge. And instead of putting a bridge in, they told him to get his car and go back to Mont Lake. So if we're getting any help right now, I think we ought to just not play games.
You go to that, that town?
I'm going to that. All right. Moving on to ARPA proposals. So there are three. I don't have a preference. I think the town seal is the easiest one.
Anybody want to discuss it, or you want to...
I don't, I don't have any, of course, I was there for the argument, so I don't have any... I can...
Before I make a motion, anybody have any questions on this one? I'm not trying to make a...
No, you're totally fine, because I don't want to make a motion myself, so...
We got a chair, you can.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Stephen, do you have?
No, I, I read, it's good, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the funding, ARPA funding for a new Westminster town seal embossing machine, not to exceed $1,500.
I'll second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor? Or, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Oh, I didn't abstain, but I scored a third.
Are you abstaining?
Yeah.
Yeah, I should probably abstain.
Yes, yes, all that one.
Okay. Do you want to do the defibrillator or the Hurst House? Want to just do the defibrillator?
Sure.
Okay.
I make a motion that we accept the ARPA funding recommendations for the defibrillator or defibrillator to be installed in Institute J. We got a dollar now. And for the cost not to exceed $1,579. I will second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve ARPA funding for the defibrillator to be installed at Institute. Any discussion? All of them favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining from milling. And the Westminster West Hurst House. So if you, if you look at the estimate that she had for repairs, there's a, the cost for cedar shakes or slate, and that's because Frank's building has both on it, so...
A slate underneath, of a cedar underneath the slate.
Right. So I think the recommendation would be to put slate on it, but...
The slate would last longer and the cedar, what is the cost for cedar? Oh, see, the cedar would be $5,366.
Yeah.
The slate's actually less, and it will last longer.
Possibly able to reuse what they've got for slate?
About half the roof is, the north side has intact slate on it, and there is some slate on the south side, so actually they could probably, about two-thirds of it...
I was wondering if that's why it was cheaper.
Yeah, there's some cedar there too, but that's, they can't reuse that. That's older than the slate. We could do a not to exceed 20,000, and they can come up with their own plan in the middle there. I mean, it actually seems like a very modest sum for essentially rebuilding the building. Pretty inexpensive after.
By the way, the logs didn't get cemented on it. They didn't, why? The hemlock, we got $97. It was, it was 1,600 feet of pine. I don't know if it was, I never really looked at it. Alex kind of cleaned it up.
The ash, the ash was dead and rotten, but the pine was good.
They they opened it. I think it was cut short. I don't know. I better go ask the guy why. I had no intention to go over there, but the hemlock made ninety seven bucks. The trucking was a flat fee, so we had we had hardwood on that. So it wouldn't.
Where did it go?
It went to the Rocky Hemlock, Eric Henry. So I know the guy there, so I used to ask him why.
Maybe that's why.
What?
So maybe that's why.
I've always been really, really well by mine, but um. I don't know how he ordered it, but the guy was just. He did it well.
I don't know, yeah, we didn't cut any of it. It was all done by.
Yeah, it was all done. I think there was a couple ten foot. They only like ten foot in pine, but it was basically. So but I think there was one that was twelve. So that should have, unless it had red rod in it. I didn't really look. Make sure that's all red rod. It's no good. I don't know. And it's made with pulp. His pulp has just jumped. So maybe we should got rid of the logs for nothing. They got current and we only had to bring them to our house.
Right.
And the trucking was, it was three hundred fifty bucks and that was a straight, so I would have paid that for mine, so I didn't have to charge you guys. I just talked off.
So there's a few standing chunks of series or other.
Hemlock.
Hemlock.
Hemlock. They got paid with hemlock.
But there's still some standing chunks out there.
Yes.
They gotta be pretty good for making a lot of the white stuff fall.
Oh, I think they look like sawlogs standing up there to me.
Oh, they're still standing.
Yeah.
When do they come down or what's that?
When will they? Oh, well.
When they get, when power company has to.
Those will will probably cut down. I just. Ran out of time to fill out little projects, so I just left them there because.
The place looks, I mean, with the grass growing in, it looks nice.
I think it looks better than it did.
I think it's good. That's fine. That's fine. But, um, uh.
Let's get back to that.
Yeah, yeah, so anyway, uh. So the, other than the sad not acquiring much money for the timber that was. Taken out, um, the estimate seems very reasonable. The structural repairs, eleven thousand two forty seven, which seems. Really good. And then you have a roof for. Five thousand, uh. Well, I guess the slate is four thousand six hundred to seven thousand one hundred.
No, the the total between.
Okay, so that's why you get a span.
Of fifteen to.
Eight ninety nine to eighteen eighty nine.
Yeah. So if we did a not to exceed twenty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the only would get what they submit in one's support.
Right.
It's eleven, that's all I can do.
Right.
I'll make motion to approve the ARPA funding for the Westminster, uh, Westminster West first house. Not to exceed twenty thousand. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining, Millie.
Okay.
Alright, um, any other ARPA things for move on? Okay.
Actually, our group.
Well, we could, um, so the town hall group. Ally has not had much luck getting anybody else to come with the group and give us an estimate. And I feel like we should fix, at least fix that. Fix that. And do any worry about.
How about this?
Creating, well, yeah.
I wouldn't want, if that's the worst corner, I'm no roofer, but we've got a lot of rain and that doesn't seem to be growing and there's no water dripping on the floor. I'm not saying it's not leaking.
Right.
But I'm saying I don't think it's. It's dire.
Is some of these stains from?
These have been here for.
Been here for a long time, a really long time.
We could actually replace the panels so that we know when we get new ones.
The guy from Brown told me, he said, slate roof, you need to go out there this spring. It's ice messes with you.
Yes, you do.
And so what they do with a lot of people is they'll do that repair. And then they'll look around and they'll say, okay, you might have a little thing here. Then they come in the spring and that's one thing we should be doing. It should be in our thing, absolutely, because your roof is your most important part of your building, roofing your foundation. Every spring they come over and, you know, find out from them what what kind of that cost and have it kind of in our.
Right, he said he was gonna follow up with that.
Yeah, we're probably looking at spending twenty five hundred dollars to five thousand dollars in the year.
How do you get to the attic of this roof? To see if insulation is all soggy and wet? Is there, is there a, is there a ladder or?
Is that a trap door right there?
Yeah.
So that is a ladder of, I love the story. But that does look like the, there's no, there's nothing out here for another staircase going up or anything.
Oh, because they think you have a stage yard.
Oh, yeah, a stage yard. That is a tall ladder.
Yeah.
Well.
I mean, that was, it was just, I didn't want us to fall off the radar.
No.
No, we used to, winters come, we need to get these guys over here.
Why don't we just do what we just did, approve, uh, Brown not to exceed two thousand dollars? If they find something else while they're up there.
And they can look at everything else.
Check it out. If they don't spend it, they don't. But at least it gets someone up there, eyes on it.
That's a, that's a, that's a reasonable small amount. I I obviously, there's. More to be found to.
Sure.
Maintain broken pieces elsewhere, um, ultimately, but we we can. Uh, keep working that.
Against the ball rolling.
Would be nice to have a sort of a reasonable bit of just maintaining our.
We might do that. Brown, Brown stuff they would do.
Browns, Brownswood.
We totally taught them.
Yeah, and it's written right here on our estimate.
What it said?
Spring, spring maintenance.
It said that installers will do a full roof inspection while they're onsite doing repairs. And will follow up call to discuss regular spring maintenance schedule.
That sounds like just what we want as opposed to Jenkewitz, which was gray hunk. Forty six thousand?
Yeah.
No, um, and, uh. What we want is a ongoing relationship with somebody who can do the ordinary.
I bet the staff had a, you know, they have a good job.
Well, this is just, as you said, important to 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 regularly look at it. Um, often we we expect to do maintenance and then we think we spend a whole lot of money with that. Yeah, that's never true.
For the not to exceed two thousand dollars?
Was wasn't it four or thirteen?
Yeah, thirteen twenty five. It's not, this is from our.
Thirteen twenty, so two thousand.
A little bit of a.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Oh, I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded.
Did you have that, no?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you need this, Millie? This is the estimate.
Sixty four, thank you.
In the town hall safe.
We don't have.
I don't, yeah, yeah.
No, I have, I do have something, um, so tomorrow I'll find out. I've got a. Just got against contact, so I'm gonna pick that up tomorrow.
Which one of the town halls is, I'm sorry.
Well, well, it's not.
There's something wrong foundation wise that the safe is actually.
Not actually.
The whole building is cracking.
Something settling.
Settling, yeah. It's not good.
Oh, fucking no.
Right into the cellar.
Good, fine.
Yeah, we can table that.
Yeah, yeah.
Table, I'll, I'll get this guy's number.
Alright.
To get my log there.
Yep, errors and omissions.
This is the screen listing?
Yeah.
Kevin's is a good piece, but.
You ever will? Yeah.
I make a motion to approve. The errors and omissions. Four, two, six, one. Made a ten, four, one, twenty-three parcel. Zero, zero, three, zero, nine, four, dot, one, six, zero. Uh, fifteen shady lines trailer mark, trailer park. Current grand list value fifty nine hundred and the reason. This unlanded mobile home was removed in July of twenty two. So this does, does this change it from grand list value of five thousand nine hundred to zero?
Well, we need a second and then we can.
Okay, sorry, second, yeah.
I believe unlanded means it's, it doesn't exist anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if your mobile home's gone and there's no land, it would seem like it's going from five thousand nine hundred.
To zero.
Yeah, it was, um, and that I guess makes sense. It's no mobile home, I don't like.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I don't think so, other than it would be nice if they wrote, if they prepared to wrote on that.
What they changed.
If the change went from fifty nine hundred to zero or.
Or if there's.
Whatever, yeah. But. So fifty nine hundred is current. Empty base to zero, I guess.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have one of these, no?
Yes, thank you.
Um, town manager's report.
I said she didn't have one.
Ally, Ally's, so. Road foreman's report. Kinda got one already.
So we're working right now on the, uh, third road's ramp between, it's on the west road. Got a ramp for the entire west road because it's hydrologically connected. So, uh, the needs were removing berms, uh. Reshaping the road, getting some water drains positive positively and not, um. Um, having cutouts and like that. They want to eliminate all that and get water. They're gonna do it as fast as you can so it's not creating any momentum and lessons erosion and. Gravel in their books and all that kind of thing, so.
So, uh, just, so Westminster West Road from Saxon River all the way to Putney or?
The west road.
The west road.
Oh, oh, sorry, the west, the west road, the road up by the west.
The west road in Westminster.
Okay, so, uh, and.
So from Cross Road, right now we're working from Cross Road up to, uh, Blueski's Camp Road. Um, that little section is always bad right there. Um, the water never gets off. Toward the fork like it should. It runs down the road, the whole length of the road, then goes out and it gets toward Cross Road. So, um, we're establishing ditches up through there, cutting shoulders off. We'll be planting grass seed, doing some stonework. We'll, we'll be finishing up there this week on that road and then we'll revisit it. This is an ongoing project that won't be done until next summer. We've got an extension because of. All the storms in Vermont. They don't expect anybody to get done. We originally said that we weren't gonna do it because. In the spring, we had so much to do because of the snowstorm March, uh, trying to clean up all the trees and stuff like that. They wanted this originally done by April. Well, there's no way. Not gonna happen. But the state decided that now. Don't have to be done until next year, so we decided we. Take it on and get it done.
So you're gonna go from there next year about all the way down to?
We're gonna do the whole one, yeah.
Down to Putney or?
To Putney, yeah.
Does it involve, I mean, you're, so you're. Essentially, there is existing ditches, but they're filled up or?
Yeah, you'll be cleaning all them out. We'll be adding stone to them where it needs it to be. Um, putting grass down. It's, it's Act sixty four. It's the Clean Water Act. That's what this is.
What happens is you get these places where there's a little berm and it drops off. So they do cutouts and all the water hits just those cutouts. It's a terrible road during my property from that, and then they took the berm off. And now the water sheds equally everywhere, pretty much, and you don't have any issues. It just.
And the berm is essentially the the pile of dirt left as.
You know, the stone wall or whatever was there until the road's kind of below. And there's a little berm and then it drops off. So it can't, they make the cutouts through the berm and you get rid of the whole berm. The water evenly rolls off. It makes a huge difference.
Is the berm that, the essentially that, uh, sand and gravel created by.
Yeah.
Grading and erosion, et cetera.
Mostly, mostly caused by snow.
Snow, snowplow.
That's what mostly does.
Yes, yeah.
Happens on driveways too.
It happens on.
People go riding.
The Terry Road too. And, um, does this involve any stone wall or or tree line removal?
Uh, in places, in places, if you get a tree that's in the edge of the road, it needs to come out.
Do you anticipate?
The state actually, the state actually wants us to have a six foot clear zone on the edge of the road back. They would like to see us cut every tree six feet within the road. Obviously, we're not gonna do that.
Yeah, um, do, do, in your, in your, imagine the scope of of the project or as you're planning the project. Are we going to get? Feedback? Have you already received any feedback?
From only positives so far.
What's that?
Positive so far.
Positive, positive. So what I would imagine is as adverse feedback would be people complaining about, uh. Seen tree or stone wall removal.
We, right now, I don't foresee any real stone wall removal down through there so much. I was just trying to think of stone walls down through there.
We moved the stone wall, but there was really nothing left of it. You can't tell there was a stone wall there. It was nothing. It was completely dilapidated, mostly buried, and it was causing the burns, so that's. And then when they did the cutouts, I have six foot canyons that were never there from the cutouts. It came right down the cutouts to now. They haven't grown there since you took the berm off. A lot of rock in it.
Right.
You couldn't even tell.
Well, I don't, I don't foresee any, and normally we don't cut any trees that are ancient maples, rain like that, unless they're dead. They're gonna fall over anyway. Uh, most anything is small. You know, if it's right in the ditch line or something like that. And a tree that big is gonna turn into a tree that big and your problem's just gonna get bigger. It's better to. Eliminate it before it turns into something more than it is, in my, it's my opinion, but.
And and then another, just, just trying to. Uh, manage, um, public concerns.
Yeah.
There, this project, will it be perceived at all as something in advance of paving the road? You know how that would be regarded?
Yes.
Yes, and it doesn't, doesn't, and 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 if anybody who's working on this project. Who's asked, is this impreparatory to paving, would be able to comfortably say, no, 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 that's not what we're.
No, they don't, yeah, no, they don't exactly.
That's, that's important to 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 keep that clear so we don't steer unnecessary corners, yes.
Right.
That's what I'm. And frankly, from my point of view, um, having grown up in Westminster West, um. When I was growing up on the, on that flat stretch of the highway. Of the paved road, south of the village, uh, um, from Mary Mitchell's down through, through the area. That was lot lined with lovely stone wall and large maple trees.
Right.
Planted by the Grange in eighteen nineties. And of course, the salt from the road and all killed the trees and all. And then the town, of course, as Craig was widening the road, took that all the way. But the general transition from a beautifully shaded road to a.
White.
Where it is now, it was, this, basically, it was luck for the event.
Oh, I don't, I don't disagree.
And, uh, but, you know, the trees do die, but and it, but salt does a little number on them.
Progress, right?
Yeah, yeah, so, 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 sure, certain extent, there, there is a, a background to, to, uh. Concern about. Stone walls and trees.
So this is all state mandated and stuff that we're doing that.
Yeah.
Because we signed the municipal roads general permit. And we adopted the best management, I say we, you guys. The best management practices. We agreed if you were to do this. Which I don't know what would happen if you decided against it.
Or I think if you get somebody complains, tell them go to the state representative. That's what.
You can send, you can send them down and see David.
Right, anyway, okay.
But anyway, that's the, that's the report, yeah, so.
Is this project where the hill is being generated from at, uh, like the bottom of?
Yes, that's right, by.
So I came down that hill today and, uh, what's it, wall was completely sideways in the road, blocked with all flames. I think there should be, if we're gonna dump there, I don't have any problem dumping there. There should be a sign or some.
It's all in the patch, right? You're talking about?
No, not that I saw, unless I, unless I missed them, but I don't.
Should have, should have, board the head signs up.
I didn't see any. Just.
Yes, if people, people come down, I'll do that. Yes, if people, people come down after that.
Well, I, I just don't wanna see, yeah, somebody.
And the, the biggest reason we're dumping there is because that road dropped, there's no shoulder.
Well, no, I don't have a problem dumping there.
No, no.
Somebody should just.
Absolutely, and I will.
Yeah.
I will make a point of saying something.
No, no.
On that note, Zach passed his, uh, CDL test, he's got a, um, class B CDL, um, I'm sorry, he's got a class A CDL with, no, he can't tow a trailer or anything, next year he'll go back for his panel, but I'd like to do a used to drive first without a trailer. Um, he's taking the, uh, next week he's going for the chainsaw safety, they gave him a logging that everybody else has had, so he'll be up speed on that. Um, solid rating, reef blowing, and, uh, and as well as, we're still moving, that's all. Going on, next week we'll start putting plow frames on some of the trucks that we're not using, um, now that we're done hauling stuff, a couple of these retired guys don't hear how much, um, that's about it. Me and we discussed everything else.
Thanks for that, another COVID related problem.
And we, I did get our propane tanks, and they're supposed to be here Friday to hook the one up at the town garage, purge it, hook up the regulator, and then Lucas will come and fire the furnace and make sure that works, yes.
And we're all set on gasoline? And we're buying gasoline by the tank pool?
Yeah, that's what we're doing now.
It's one's okay delivering it by the tank pool as opposed to a contract for the year or something.
Right.
But they essentially, they've got the contract because nobody else.
Two hundred gallons at a time normally, so it's not. There's not too many places that have gasoline and funding out. Two that I know, and I've called, I've even called private farmers and everybody else that has gas at their placement, like, hey, where do you get gas? And they all, most of them, and they're not. No, it's, it's one, it's one too, well. So.
All right. Any other questions for Chuck? All right.
I make a motion to approve the town road foreman's report. What are you doing? We're approving it.
I'll, I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve road foreman's report, all those in favor?
Okay.
Aye.
That's all.
I don't know of any reason to have any further second.
We don't have any managers news that's changed?
Waiting.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay.
Or to commit some permissions?
I was not on, uh, able to attend the planning commission.
Uh, yeah.
Monday.
I haven't, uh, no, it's going to be next Monday.
Okay, do, do this one.
I got an email from Barry, it was after, I'm sorry, uh, an agenda for no, I don't know. October twenty-third? No, Monday, October sixteen. There will be a meeting completed on town planning things on Monday. I don't have anything else for boards to make some questions. Other business, um, the state of Vermont, as you know, approved our recommendation to reduce the speed in front of Bates Ford, that little section of road there, um, down to forty-five miles per hour, and they are issuing a work order to retrans, to install required signs, um, and speed limit will take back once the signs have been installed. We don't have any further action, this is just our notification that they're doing that.
So they're not lowering the speed.
So we're, we're, we're now warned.
We're now, we're now warned.
We, it's actually face that's.
That suggested that, yeah.
Apply.
I always thought it was.
We, 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 we support it. We support it, yes. Any other business? All right, date of next meeting, Wednesday, October twenty-fifth.
Wait, is this, uh, I'm sorry, this, what's this thing?
Uh, because it didn't make, we just have, it's gonna be an agenda item at the next meeting for us to sign.
Okay. It will be signed later.
Yes. All right.
Make a motion again.
Second, motion has been made and seconded to adjourn at seven twenty-five, all those in favor? Aye.
Superb.